That clock is always a little rough. That clock is always a little.
At least some of these meetings we have. About you so easily.
Um, the one that's.
I've talked to.
I'm gonna use your model.
I didn't.
His people are online.
I knew he could say. I said, build this light next to your house or whatever.
I think they should.
Well, what time do you have since you're the official title?
I have five fifteen.
Servitude with them.
We've got, we've got two minutes until you call this thing to order.
Okay.
Did bring Sash back, too?
Probably check on, probably check in on anybody online.
Cause I want to stay defeated.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know. Hey, Justin, is there gonna be anybody online Zoom, on Zoom?
Um, yeah, uh, from, uh, from Kittleson. There's gonna be people on Zoom and there were, there is an option.
We're on number twenty-five.
Um, I think the public, there's a link to the website if the public wants to go on Zoom.
Hundred eighteen, yeah.
So Kittleson will need to be in the, uh.
See, and that was the.
Yeah, but not.
Just.
Just for Josh, cause it's true.
Just right.
There's somebody on Zoom right now.
Yeah, that's Kittleson.
I don't think you do. Yeah, I understand.
You try. Oh, hi. I wanna take my responsibilities. So excited to see you.
I, well, I have to say, tag you, like. There's nothing special for me, by the way.
It's a personal.
And Kevin, okay. Just Kevin, you.
Have a spare seat.
No.
I was looking at her, I was like.
No, Mel brought, Mel brought enough for all of us.
Can we have five? Tell all your lips hatch.
Where's our, where's our film guy? He's, he's back there?
Yes.
You wanna give us a high sign when you're ready to go, fellas?
We know that.
I'm bordering right now.
Cause I almost hit a deer on the way here.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could, please. And, uh, the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please rise, remove your hats and, uh, join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the first thing, first business of order, I think, is that we all get, uh, to know each other. So we'll do introductions. I wanna, uh, specifically ask the two new commissioners that have joined us to please introduce themselves initially.
I'll start. Hi, everybody, my name's Jim Molini. Um, I've lived in Clamath Falls, uh, the Clamath Falls area in Clamath County since twenty twenty-one and I'm very happy to be here. Do you want a little about me?
No, we don't need that. Okay, do we have an additional person down here?
Uh, Kenneth DeKranz, I've lived in Clamath Falls for almost seven years now. Looking at manufacturing.
And I believe we have an.
We have Charles Gray, uh, out there.
Charles, you wanna introduce yourself?
I'm Charles Gray. I've lived in Clamath County since nineteen forty-six and been retired since two thousand.
Okay, so if there's gonna be any public comment tonight, anybody that wants to, uh, speak should sign up over here on this list and then, uh, we'll have Robin give you a call when it's time to take public comment. Um, now, I would like to then ask the planning commission, starting from my far left, and this would be the county and the city planning commission, to please introduce themselves.
Kevin Harder.
Joe Young.
Jennifer Fairfield.
Randy Shaw.
Clint Rides.
Ryan McLeven.
Randy Cox.
Margot Durant.
Melody McGee.
Brian Font.
Stuart Becker. I apologize, we did not bring the name tags for our city planning.
I know, I feel really bad.
Nevertheless.
Yeah, nevertheless is exactly right. Okay, so this is a public hearing with legislative matter. Twenty twenty-five Clamath Falls Urban Area Transportation Systems Plan Adoption Recommendation. City Land Use Action will be the one CPA dash twenty-five. The County Land Use Action will be CLUP one dash twenty-five. A proposed amendment to the Clamath Falls Urban Area Comprehensive Plan to adopt the twenty twenty-five Clamath Falls Urban Area Transportation Plan, a study of existing area transportation facilities and expected transportation facility demands over the next twenty years. If adopted, a TSP summary is to be included within Comprehensive Plan Volume Number One, Urban Area Plan as Chapter Twelve, Transportation, with the full TSP to be included within Comprehensive Plan Volume Number Three, Facilities Master Plans. City Planning Commission to also consider amendments to the Clamath Falls Community Development Ordinances to comply with the Oregon Transportation Planning Rule. City Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council. County Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the Board of the County Commissioners. Both bodies will make a final decision at a later meeting date with an additional public hearing. I did forget one thing. I believe we have a couple of participants on Zoom. If you folks would introduce yourselves, that'd be great.
My name is Maria DeBares. I'm with Kittleson Associates.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Becker. I'm with Jack Manning, assisting with Kittleson team.
Sir, would you like to introduce yourself?
Uh, Mike Zarazinsky, Clamath County Engineer.
Okay, thank you very much. Sequencing will go like this. TSP and staff report presentation is first. Joint discussion with questions and answers between planning commissions, staff and consultants. Move to open joint public hearing. Then we will take public comment. Move to close joint public hearing. Joint Planning Commission deliberation. City Planning Commission action. County Planning Commission action. And at that point, we will have a recommendation that we're gonna pass on to the Board of County Commissioners. With that said, we would like a staff report at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think, I guess I'll lead out. Jeremy Morris, Clamath County Planning Director. Um, we have some staff introductions and consultant teams. Um, so go ahead, Justin.
Uh, Justin Throne with the Planning Department.
Matt Kittleson with Kittleson and Associates.
I'm Joe Wall, City of Clamath Falls Planning Department.
And we met, uh, Mike Zarazinsky, County Engineer, online. Um, a few city staff in attendance in the audience. Um, Ian?
Ian Beatty, Development Services Director at City.
John Anderson, Associate Planner at the City.
Bart Bullitt, Department of Transportation.
And also Devon.
Yeah, I'm Devon Haring, Department of Transportation. This is a TGM grant, which is a grant awarded yearly to small communities to fund their transportation. So in twenty twenty-one, Clamath Falls won the grant award and that's what funds this project. My role as agency project manager is to review the work, contribute where I see the need that's ODOT representative and pay Kittleson for the work they do.
Great, thank you. Um, I thought I'd give a little bit of background, uh, where we're at right now and then where we're going. Um, from a background standpoint, we're considering an update to the twenty twelve Transportation System Plan. This is the Urban Transportation System Plan. On the county side, we have a twenty twenty, what I call the Rural Transportation System Plan that was, uh, reviewed and adopted in the past through a previous TGM grant. Um, the city and the county, uh, pursued this grant through the Transportation Growth Management Grant through ODOT. We were selected and then ODOT, uh, worked with the city and the county to put out an RFP, uh, statewide and, uh, Kittleson was selected out of that RFP. And so the last twelve months or so has been pretty intensive from a city staff and county staff standpoint of, uh, this TSP certainly has a lot of lines on a map or dots on a map for existing issues that we know on the existing system and, uh, what we project some of those future issues and constraints will be. And so, um, that's what Matt and his team has worked hard for over the last couple of, uh, well, twelve months. And then, uh, we've had quite a few public outreaches. Uh, we had a work session, joint work session in December with, uh, both city and county planning commission. So what's changed since twenty twelve? Um, there, there's, there's a lot that's changed since twenty twelve. And if you review the twenty twelve document, which was our first urban TSP, uh, it was very limited. And, um, uh, so since then, you know, the last twelve, thirteen years, uh, funding mechanisms have changed. And so there's an emphasis on safety projects and multimodal projects. Uh, there's been growth in our community that's changed. Uh, we've completed some of the projects that were identified in that twenty twelve Transportation System Plan. We've both completed a Transportation Safety Action Plan. Uh, the city's, uh, was adopted, I believe, last year in twenty twenty-four. Ours was adopted in twenty twenty-one. Uh, we completed an urban trail master plan since, uh, twenty twelve. That was completed in twenty seventeen, I believe. And several regional plans have been completed. And so this current document kind of rolls and gathers all of that into one complete concise document instead of living in ten different documents. And, um, you know, as a part of this, uh, effort, Kittleson and their team counted traffic at, I don't know, fifty or sixty intersections in the community. Uh, that intersection list was generated by the staff and public. Uh, those known hotspots for congestion and safety issues. And, uh, then you pick a growth and you apply that growth to, uh, the existing traffic that we counted today to see if we can predict. If we're, had an intersection that was good today, but with the growth becomes bad tomorrow, it needs to be a dot on a map that we try to address, um, with a project in the future. Of course, we know that we have several intersections that are failing today from a capacity standpoint. I don't have to mention this one. Uh, everybody knows it, but South Six and Homedale is terrible to get through and sometimes takes two or three lights to get through. That's what we'd like to avoid with proper planning today and, and, um, proper prioritization of these projects going forward. We have to pick a growth rate and, uh, there was some discussion at the work session about that. If we pick a growth rate too high, then that generates more projects into the high category list, which means that our hundred and fifty million dollars of needs grows to three or four hundred million dollars of needs if we pick too high of a growth rate. If we pick too low, then we, uh, don't anticipate where we're gonna have, uh, those problems in the future. So we may have, uh, in a way underestimated the problem if we pick too low. So Matt will talk about that, you know, in a little bit. And so where are we going? Um, hopefully we'll have a good discussion tonight on the Urban Transportation Plan. Uh, both these boards would recommend approval to the parent board, either the City Council and/or the Board of Commissioners on the county side. And what we're trying to work towards inside of the urban growth boundary in a way is planned development that conforms with, um, land development codes and community development ordinances. That's what the city calls theirs is a CDO. And, um, right now we have differing construction standards. So the county uses rolled curb and the city uses vertical curb. The contractor has to interpret and use the right curb forms depending on where they're at. Um, to me, I see that that's an inefficiency and we could work on one standard, which would save time and cost of a contractor having to know two different types of curb standards or two different types of concrete mix or two different side but widths. You know, those types of things, uh, would be good to have a uniform approach to inside of the urban growth boundary. And that'll internal save contractors and developers time and money and, and hopefully streamline our standards. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Joe. He wanted to discuss a few city specific items also.
Well, what should we start with? Okay, um, I think we'll talk about the Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. We'll get to this. So the idea with the Transportation System Plan, as Jeremy alluded to, it's both city and county within the urban growth boundary. So meaning we need both bodies to recommend approval. Uh, county does have a separate Transportation System Plan for area outside the UGB. Similar to the Transportation System Plan, we have items like the Housing Needs Analysis that was done in twenty nineteen. That covers the entire urban growth boundary. Uh, city recently adopted, and I'll bring it to the county, uh, very shortly, but what we call the Economic Opportunities Analysis. And that was a study of employment lands, so commercial and industrial lands and the availabilities, capacity, expected demand over the twenty-year planning horizon. So that was planning for land needs over the next twenty years. This is planning for transportation facility needs over the next twenty years. We adopt all of these items into what we call the Urban Area Comprehensive System Plan. Clamath County has another comprehensive plan. So there is a comprehensive plan for all areas outside the urban growth boundary. But as we try to get to really same set of development standards over time, a decision was made in, I believe, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We hired a consultant, um, and both bodies approved this Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. It's largely an organizational document and incorporates all of the different master plans we've done kind of into one common resource. So I mentioned the EOA, the Housing Needs Analysis. And I'll note in the future, I'd probably like to take a look at our comprehensive plan and make it more of a vision document. Right now, I think it largely demonstrates compliance with statewide planning goals, but it really isn't like an aspirational document as to what we vision ourselves as, what do we want to be? So I think our first step was to get everything in order, organize everything in the comprehensive plan. Um, in the future, I think we will look at some of those visioning exercises. Let's call it, I don't know, Clamath Falls twenty fifteen and start to be a little more aspirational, some of those items. So the reason I brought that up is should we adopt a twenty twenty-five Clamath Falls Urban Area Transportation System Plan, a summary of it would be included within the front end, we call it the Urban Area Plan. And then the entirety of the document is in what we call Volume Three of the Comprehensive Plan, which is Background Plans and Exhibits, where we keep a number of other background documents. Uh, similarly, other background volumes, we have Clamath County Land Development Code, City Community Development Ordinance. We have all of our different intergovernmental agreements between the city and county, different service, uh, districts such as, let's say, South Suburban Sanitary and others. So I do think the Urban Area Comprehensive Plan was a good exercise. City's prior comprehensive plan was very dated. It was from about nineteen eighty. It was very informative in that it shared a, like, winter elk migration patterns and soil types and other things, but it really provided no direction, I swear, as far as land development and finding whether or not something was in compliance with it. So it's a great background document that is now a reference to the current comprehensive plan. And then similarly, I think the overall Clamath County Comprehensive Plan covered many urban, I'm sorry, rural items, but didn't focus as much on that area outside city limits, but within the UGB. So the thought was to have a joint comp plan. We then have our own separate implementing ordinances, which over time, again, may be.
Tw- twenty, twenty twenty-one for the county for the urban comp plan is when we adopted.
So there, there, there aren't any standards or codes or anything that are in, that are involved with the transportation plan the way we have it today?
Uh, as far as from a county perspective?
Well, I, well, yeah.
We're, so, um, no, the way that our land development code is set up is that, um, it's, um, this is referenced. And so simply by just referencing it, um, Elizabeth can explain a little bit later on. All that we're doing on the county side is updating it from the twenty twelve urban TSP to now reference the twenty twenty-five urban TSP. If, uh, we choose to recommend adoption. The adoption's not tonight, the recommendation for adoption. There will be a future City Council Board of Commissioners meeting in February. Um, that would be the actual adoption and the comp plan amendment. I think it's a good time for, uh, the Kittleson team to give their presentation. Uh, some of you heard parts of this at the, uh, work session in December.
Sure, yeah, again, Matt Kittleson, Kittleson Associates. You guys covered all the fun stuff, so I just.
I didn't even know I was talking this.
Yeah. Uh, thanks for the chance to present. It's been a, as, as Jeremy said, it's been a lot of work in a year. It's a lot of long-range planning, uh, to consider, uh, building off of the work that's been done. Um, and I think this has been framed up well, just, I'll just kinda put us in the right mindset. It's a long-range vision, uh, for the transportation system within the urban area, uh, for the county and the city. We're trying to unify that vision, um, to the extent reasonable and useful to, to both jurisdictions. Um, and we're looking at twenty years, but in the case of Clamath Falls with such a big urban boundary, oftentimes we expect that projects may go beyond twenty years. We've tried to err on the side of putting a line where we think there might wanna be a line or putting a dot where we think there might wanna be a dot just to make sure that we don't get in the business of trying to predict where growth's gonna happen in the twenty years, just be ready for whatever it does. So, uh, throughout this, there's a line of that and it's worked well for the last twelve-plus years to take that approach in, in the urban area, which is just, it's a really big urban area and there's a lot of where, places that growth can happen. So you'll see that theme throughout. Uh, there's compliance elements of this with Transportation Planning Rule and coordination. Uh, it's well-coordinated, which is good. ODOT's been heavily involved, both city and county obviously driving this. Uh, so we have a really well-coordinated plan before you today. Uh, the schedule, so we've done a lot of various things throughout this. Public outreach has been a key part of it. So we've had an advisory committee that's met four times. Some of the people in the room have served on that. Two open houses, one last April, one just last November in this room here. Um, and then technically going through what's been done in the past, analyzing the existing intersections like Jeremy mentioned, projecting things out in the future, identifying solutions to those and then ultimately rolling everything up into a new plan. So that's a crash course in transportation planning. The result is hopefully something that makes sense and can be used as, as things come forward. Um, so from an overall, just the TSP itself, and please, by the way, I, I'm gonna kinda hit things quickly cause I know we've talked about it, but if you have questions or comments, stop me, uh, so we can just, uh, address those as we go through. The document itself is organized into a couple chapters. Chapter one is what are we doing? What is the Transportation System Plan? What are our guiding principles? Uh, how do we do it, et cetera? So really that overview and context of the TSP itself. Two is addressing goals and policies. These are useful not just as we do the TSP, but coming back later if something's not addressed in the TSP. Goals and policies, of course, useful. As a planning commission, you all know this, of why are we doing this in the first place? How can we help answer questions that might arise later on? Three, we call the Trans- Transportation Needs Assessment. This is how is the system operating today? What are we expecting that future baseline condition to be? Uh, Jeremy got into the population forecast, so we do growth of tra- of traffic. Uh, we also have to be coordinated with Portland State. We know that's kind of a moment in time estimate, but that's a reference that we include. Um, and then the same thing, uh, with active transportation conditions. What exists from a walking, biking infrastructure perspective? Rail, uh, freight, uh, system, what's there today? So we know what we're trying to plan to improve in the future. Uh, chapter four, we call creating a multimodal system. This is, uh, more of the, um, uh, elements that, system elements that make up that transportation system. So we identify who owns what road, jurisdictional, uh, uh, information, functional classification, which classifies how roads should operate, um, what, where we have standards. And as Jeremy mentioned, a lot of the standards reference the TSP. We try to do that again to the extent practical the other way. So the TSP references standards. And there's an important reason why, you know, if, if any of the agencies locally want to change something, changing things in ordinance is a very different process than changing things in a comprehensive plan. So we try to not create a cumbersome process to do administrative things. So if you're wondering why we're not listing specific roadway standards, that's why. Because those, those get updated. We don't wanna have to, as much as you may be interested in roadway standards, this is a much bigger process than maybe necessary for that or, or any of the various standards that exist. Uh, things like freight, bridges, culverts, rail, rail, air pipelines, a lot of things that you don't think of in the transportation system, but we're documenting where those things are, how they can be improved, what, what, uh, uh, standard would be used to improve those, uh, various elements. So it's a lot of kind of the nuts and bolts of how the system operates and how we might change it in the future. Chapter five is, is the fun part, the Transportation Solutions, we call it. This is where we document, we'll get into this in a little bit more detail, but what are those projects, uh, that we want to focus on over the next twenty years? Street operations and preservations, acknowledging that that's important. You know, as much as we like to think of new projects, it's important to maintain, uh, the system we have and making that clear in the TSP. The TSP, it hasn't been said, but I know we talked about it a lot, a lot last time. It is an important document, not just to plan the system, but to leverage local resources to get grants to improve and maintain the system. So saying what's important to us in this document is important so that we can go out and say, look, this is important, it's part of our long-range plan. We can go get funds for that in the city. The county have both been very successful getting grants to that end. Um, intersection projects, uh, obviously improving where streets come together, corridor projects, active transportation projects, which is included references to lots of the work Jeremy had mentioned with Trails Master Plan. Uh, the Subway Plan and Vision Projects, this is what we're calling those beyond twenty-year projects. So, uh, in this case, you might not build a project until development happens. So you, you know, over a twenty-year period, for example, a new roadway into a development area, the city or the county would never go build on their own. But when development happens, you need that road. That's a good example of a vision project or something whose, uh, capacity needs maybe beyond twenty years. Uh, we're not saying they happen in that twenty-year horizon, but we're men, again, mentioning them as needed so that if the need arises because some development requires it or patterns change, we have that line clearly outlined. Um, we know what we would plan to do in that location.
So just as some reference examples, we have almost thousands of excess acres, uh, just thousands of vacant acres of residential land. So if you see subdivisions go up in Stewart Lennox, for example, you're gonna need to increase road capacities and moving roads. If you see land above Foothills Boulevard, let's say north of Steen Sports Park, there's a lot of lines on paper there that are development-driven. So let's say connecting foothills all the way up to Old Ford Road, those are kind of those vision development-driven projects that aren't necessarily needed unless you have to develop in those areas.
I guess I would use that as a place to, uh, inject that roadways are utility corridors also. So this is just covering the transportation side. A lot of the hurdles we have with, uh, development is also water and sewer and, and storm drain, which drives up the cost of, um, these vision projects. But, um, each water and sewer and each agency, South Suburban and the city of Clamath Falls have master plans for those that cover those, uh, entities. But when we're inviting or planning for development, it's really, uh, water, sewer, roads, storm drain and power and, you know, gas and those types. It's a broad spectrum and roads provide the corridor to, to service those, uh, utilities.
That's generally left up to the developer though, isn't that correct?
Uh, yes, and so a lot of times the county says, gee, go put in a road. I say, well, it's not a good idea to Swiss cheese the road in three years with a new water system and then Swiss cheese it a couple of years after that with sewer and Swiss cheese it with power. And so it's a poor investment to do the road first. Um, so we have to kind of think and collaborate altogether, uh, when development occurs, not just build the road first.
So one other question, back to the term growth. How, how does that? Well, I guess ma- maybe I understood that there's some projections of what type of growth is gonna be coming to this community over what period of time?
Yeah, we've done it kind of two ways. Uh, so there's the, there's the, uh, if you just looked at purely population, Portland State says that there's gonna be pretty minimal growth in Clamath Falls over the next twenty years. We look at it from, from a transportation planning perspective, we look at it from a one, two percent growth a year as a pretty reasonable annualized growth rate. So we use that approach to project out what the traffic needs would be in the area when you're looking at congestion. So we've kind of looked at it a couple of different ways just to make sure that we can understand if, if intersections were to grow, how would that change capacity at those specific locations?
And did Portland State have the same prediction for Bend?
Uh, no.
I guess, um, and on that note, if we pick five, six or seven percent, then our hundred and fifty million turns into seven hundred million in need. And what's the point? Uh, if we're struggling to figure out a fund a hundred and fifty million and we increase it by five times because of a growth rate, we'll kind of really be struggling to provide and hit those targets.
Yeah, and for context, sorry, just real quick, uh, we just did a highway project in Madras. Um, it's obviously between Bend and Redmond. They, looking at pretty aggressive growth pattern there. It's less than one percent annualized growth over that twenty-year period. So, you know, busy roads, you know, compounding interest, it's good for your investment, not good for traffic, uh, cause it can add up over time. So it's, you know, one to two percent is not a casual growth. Uh, the other thing I would say, just from a context perspective, it's not, this, uh, this isn't a, a really profound statement, but congestion often overlaps with safety needs that we see. So as Jeremy and, and Joe mentioned, this. So as Jeremy and Joe mentioned, the city has recently, and the county have updated their transportation safety action plans, we developed those. We see a lot of those overlapping and it's, that's good for, one, identifying needs. It's two, makes two different funding sources available. There's capacity needs and there's also grant programs that are focused on addressing safety needs. There's a lot of those right now. And predictions are those will continue because it's a good thing for governments to improve, it's a good thing for communities to improve. So having both that lens is really good for this plan as well. So it takes the congestion thing a little bit out, um, of the paradigm it's been in in the past.
We also have to estimate inflation. Um, also, I remember back to a budget meeting when I first. Let's, let's just call it twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, when I, when I first started was. Uh, we have a capital improvement plan that we have to present to the board of commissioners every year and we put three percent inflation in there and. Um, one of the county commissioners at the time said, well, three percent, that's, uh, unreasonable and off the charts and is, uh, you should lower it. And a couple of budget, uh, work sessions later in like twenty twenty four, uh. I had the same three percent number in there and kind, and somebody said, three percent, don't you think that's a little low, you know, today? And so you, you have to pick something and you have to project out and inflation and, uh, traffic projections, but it's also over twenty years. And it ebbs and flows. And so three percent over twenty years is a sixty percent increase in in project costs. Uh, one percent over twenty years is a twenty percent growth. And so. Um, you know, at least you have some capacity in what you've picked to, um, project out, so.
Complicating that question, and I'm glad you threw in a number, Matt. What about tourism? We do expect tourism growth. It tends to consolidate around certain months of the year. It tends to complicate both the traffic and the parking equation because, you know, tourists come into specific locations. We want them to come in and be comfortable doing business in the area. How's that accommodated in the plan?
Yeah, it's a good question. So it's the thing, I mean, I live and work in Bend where tourism comes up quite a bit. Um, and it's, I think it's a fair question. Everything's a little different, so there's not, I won't offer a blanket assessment of it. Um, but what you typically see is when we're looking at the needs from a capacity perspective, we're looking at that four to six P M. On a typical weekday, people coming and going from work, people coming and going from school. The impacts of tourism generally don't impact that period as much as other time periods where it's a Saturday when they're coming into town to spend a weekend. Uh, I come to Klamath Falls a lot to go see in Sports Park for baseball tournaments and things like that, and it's not the same time that you all are coming and going to work. So it's often using capacity on the roads at a different time, while it can impact things. Um, in those overlap, it's worth understanding, but they tend to be pretty isolated in those cases where you see, you know, particular traction that would, that would, uh, change that. Airports sometimes can do that, those kind of things. But we typically see them, tourists using the ti- the system at a different time than the typical peak.
And that, um, Century Eagles, a great example of tens of thousands of people converging in one area with limited access. And during that event, uh, we could never plan our transportation network and it would be super expensive. Uh, to back calculate what we needed for that one weekend. We kind of live with it and manage it the best we can on that weekend and. Um, announce it out to folks that if you're not interested in being stuck in a traffic jam, maybe use an alternative route with a reader board, you know, those types of things. So we do have those specific, really big events that can cause problems at any, uh, given time. I would also say that the tourism that we measured during the twenty twenty four traffic counts, we captured it. And then we're projecting it out.
Yeah.
Um, so if, if there was a impact, a peak hours or something like that, it would, would have been captured in the traffic counts we had and then projected out.
Yeah. Um, bridges and culverts are also on here. Those are a moment in time. Look at needs. Obviously, bridges are are really, really important, but nobody thinks about them until they're broken. So maintenance of those is is pretty important and there are several. Notable needs and listing them here doesn't identify those problems, something separate from the city or county's, uh, current knowledge. It just helps with that funding piece to say, hey, this is in our system plan as a maintenance need. So those get updated pretty regularly.
They are, they are the single most condensed cost on your network. Um, I throw this number out there, a bridge, a large bridge, like the railroad bridge. Um, Mark had brought up, uh, a rehabilitation grant for ten million, you know. A replacement of the railroad bridge, uh, on South Six is probably forty million dollars. You know, the city receives a million and a half in gas tax for summer and winter maintenance. You know, you'd have to save up for thirty years or twenty years to be able to afford just replacing that one bridge. Um, the cost of that bridge, um, twenty to thirty thousand dollars a foot to. Um, you know, everything from demolishing the old bridge to, uh, design and environmental and constructing the new bridge. Which is why we try to, uh, maintain those assets for the longest period of time and take really good care of them. Because, uh, the capital side is, uh, very expensive to, uh, neglect those, um, those bridges, so.
Um, keeping moving, I think we've hit most of this. The piece I'll highlight is is just that. The T S P broadly is looking to balance the system out. So you'll see a lot of improvements for a lot of different. Uh, users of the system and that's intentional, that we have a system that really serves everybody. It's, you'll see a lot of sidewalks, uh, improvements connecting to schools, you'll see crossing locations, you'll see roadway extensions, you'll see. Capacity improvements and the intention is that this is the vision for how the system can grow. Um, it's not everything that'll happen in the next twenty years, but we think it's the big ticket items. And then again, the, the, this. System, the T S P is set up in a way that even if something's not specifically outlined, if it's a good idea and identified, it can also move forward at that point in time. So I think the vision document that Joe was talking about, this is a good start from that, from the transportation perspective. Um, going, and I know these dots are small, so it won't make you squint, but just hitting some of the highlights of what these are. Um, these maps are all in chapter five of the T S P. I know it's all been available to you guys, so. Um, just the visual of it is we have maps like this accompanied with tables for intersection projects that address. Capacity needs where we know we might need to change how the intersection is controlled, where there's geometric challenges, where. Um, roadways don't align very well and turning movements are are challenging or maybe visibility is is tough. Safety, I know you all are familiar with Transportation Safety Action Plan, so incorporating that broadly into this T S P. And then also adding where we saw additional needs. And then also noting where there's additional evaluation and study needed, where there's a bigger question than our fast year process could identify. One thing I'll note is that ODOT is currently doing a study of, of a portion of Cradle Lake Parkway. That'll add more detail to this plan in the not too distant future. So that's a good example of a more focused project. Being done, then gets rolled up into the T S P. We don't have to wait twelve years to do that. Uh, we can do that in real time. Just intended to be that living document that gets updated with better information as if it comes available.
And South Six.
South Six, yeah, a portion of South Six as well. Street corridors, so you'll see some of the lines up above foothills that that Joe was talking about. These are exact lines, so we expect roads to go exactly in these spots. Kidding, of course, it's broad brushes that suggest where connections are intended, but. Better engineering site design will, uh, provide clarity to these. Uh, we're noting where existing roads can or should be upgraded to either meet standards. Um, address traffic calming concerns or again, have a further look at evaluations and studies. A lot of these projects have been planned for a long time. You know, we're not recreating the wheel with this. That's an important thing to note. We certainly have. Added in detail where warranted or where better understood, but a lot of these needs or these connections have been contemplated for a while. Um, and that just continues on as, as, you know, we're never going to run out of things to do. So we always expect to have twenty years of projects looking out into the future to accommodate growth and just make the current system work better. Uh, that's a big part of this as well. Active transportation, so covering bicycle, pedestrian, crossing treatments. Um, relying on, uh, the things mentioned, Trails Master Plan, some safe routes to school projects. The intent here is really to have people, give people places to walk, especially people in the most vulnerable places. Also relying on the O C N E Trail, which is just an amazing, uh, uh, facility for the community. So that's a big part of this. Providing connections to that. Um, so in, and it identi- again, identifying where those improvements can be made. Many of these are just upgrades to existing roads. Where can we get sidewalks in where we need them? Uh, again, those kind of those key elements of that Trail Master Plan. The Master Plan, by the way, was really focused on creating backbone type routes through town, not. Every road, well, every road that doesn't have a sidewalk maybe could use one. We're trying to prioritize here those high, high impact locations where. Uh, we get ki- again, kids to school, that kind of stuff, yeah.
It sounds like you're, it, I got the impression you were thinking about. People using bicycles and scooters and electric vehicles on sidewalks as opposed to multimodal paths. Can you talk about?
Sure, yeah. So certainly anything about where things are used would be governed by city ordinance. We're not intending to. Um, to supersede that or dictate it. Um, scooters broadly, um, are a hot topic in the transportation world. I think there is reasonable, uh, maybe heated discussions that we're not intending to bring up through this. Uh, but certainly paths are an important part of this, so because they allow for that mixing of uses, way better than a sidewalk would. Sidewalks are typically six feet, paths are obviously much wider, um, intended to have those, the, the shared space. Um, so we're not, uh, intending to make any statements on usage of one facility.
Well, then maybe I should be asking Joe in the Klamath Falls Commission, because I, I ride back and forth periodically into Klamath Falls. Love to be able to do it, especially when it's not freezing outside. But, um, my question for all of you is, I'm not sure I want to be doing, you know, twenty miles an hour on a sidewalk in Klamath Falls. It's not good for anybody. Uh, but I did see a lot of sidewalk improvement, uh, plans inside the T S P. Is there someplace we should talk some more about how to make it more compatible with, you know, the multi-use or multimodal? Um, transport path or what do you guys think?
So we have some existing multi-use paths, whether you look at the foothills path, kind of A Canal, O C and E. I think some of the struggle with the paths is that you oftentimes need wider right of ways to install them. You'll specifically see that along foothills. Uh, so you oftentimes do have curb type sidewalks. I think we're looking at multi-use paths more in maybe like even in industrial area. Like this sounds a little bit odd, but maybe it doesn't make sense to have sidewalks there. Maybe it makes sense to just have a multi-use path on one side of the street. So I'm thinking about something, for example, Brickway Drive, kind of a new connection airport area and help to hometown. Maybe sidewalks don't make sense, but multimodal. I think if we're talking about higher speeds with bicycles, a lot of it probably that hits into bicycle lanes as well. Um, I'm not necessarily sure how many multi-use paths we specifically have shown. I think a lot of what we have shown is probably connecting missing sidewalk segments in current.
Well, because I'm, I was asking on about the O C V Trail and how to get from there into downtown. Because to me, that's a feeder, just like, you know, Washburn Way might be. And so can we, it, I didn't see consideration for that in the T S P and I'm, I'm, you know. To me, it seems like a bit of a gap. I'm wondering if there's something we can do before it gets approved to, um, answer those questions.
I think the Urban Trail Master Plan that was done in twenty sixteen, it's a little bit closer into that. It certainly talks about linkages. Because I think there's a big conversation that we have, for example, O C and E Trail, longest linear park in Oregon, hundred something miles, but then it just abruptly ends, right? West of Washburn Lane doesn't connect. Uh, something like, we'll say, Lake Ywana Trail. How do you get from the base of Link River to downtown in a safe manner? So there's a lot of those little linkages and connections that need to be built out. I think we have a lot of those projects identified.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was addressed in the Urban Trail.
Which we're making an appendix basically to the transportation system.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure that was addressed, the linkage especially was addressed in the Urban Trail, uh, plan when we, when we adopted that to become part of this overall plan.
So, so this plan kind of calls for, it, it has that in appendix. It also calls for where we know that there is a deficiency. Where a sidewalk or a bike lane doesn't exist in order for it to go onto a, a list. Um, again, the city and the county, independent of this, are going to start working on our construction standards for, uh, street cross sections. And so an appropriate street cross section for an art arterial would have a five foot bike lane and a two foot buffered bike lane. But that is, um, larger than our current arterial standard. And so we're, we're going to take a run through those. Um, you don't want narrow bike lanes on arterials. Uh, it's, it's a, really creates a lot of conflicts and, um. And so, uh, the hierarchy is on a collector or an arterial, it's usually a five or six foot lane with a two foot buffer. On a collector, it's like a six foot, you know, lane. And then, uh, you get down to local streets with less traffic and that's where your end trip is. You may not see bike lanes, but you might see. A, um, sixteen foot shared, you know, uh, corridor, but it's much safer because you have four hundred cars a day instead of. Fifteen thousand cars a day in a, in a travel lane, so, um, but those are in the construction standards. This is a master plan that identifies those gaps, um, for, um, bike and pedestrian facilities.
Thanks, Jeremy. What I'm, what I'm saying is, I think to be able to have future active transportation conditions. Fully specified or fully identified in the T S P, we need not just a, what I, probably the top priority for me is to make sure. The linkages, like you said, Randy, are identified and prioritized along with, you know, some of the other. Items that came out of that, uh, earlier.
Um, a quick story on the county collectors, Shasta Way, Altima, Summers Lane, those are three lane major collectors. They have a center turn lane. Um, a good segue into these roads, um, were, uh. The right of way was acquired a hundred years ago and literally it was for a gravel road. And then, uh, we got vehicles and then we had to build, uh, the standard county vehicle, um, road was two twelve foot paved travel lanes. And then as growth occurs and we start identifying collectors and arterials, which are. Um, you know, the local street feeds to the collector, the collector just feed to the arterial and you start focusing more and more traffic and it, and it grows. And then we fast forward to, uh, transportation system plans and comp plans and urban planning and. Uh, so our curb to curb on a major collector for the last fifty or sixty years has been forty two feet. And a bike lane doesn't fit, uh, with the travel lanes that were, that was built for. And so. It does become a challenge to, in this case, our collectors, we would scoot the curbs over three feet. For twenty five miles of roads, uh, each side, so fifty miles, which becomes a, you know. I don't know, two or three or four hundred million dollar whatever, um, for the, for the extra two feet. And, uh, so that is a, a geometric challenge. It wasn't, um, chosen or performed by us. It really wasn't chosen by our predecessors because as society grew and we have better planning. Now we have the impact of, um, you know, this transportation system plan, but also. Any greenfield development would have the new standards and and whatnot associated with it. And so in the short term, we've got to live with. How do we get connections on, um, uh, streets? This is a very controversial project, but it is a great example of. Um, the Oregon Avenue Bike Path of fitting something existing into, um, through neighborhoods. And in this case, kind of a road diet to take a lane away in order to have a two directional multi-use path. Um, to serve a, a portion of town. Um, some would argue that's a great plan and some have argued against that, so.
Matt, have you seen other communities solve this in a rational way?
What's, what solve, what specifically?
Specifically, you know, original paths which are too narrow to accommodate, you know, the full scope of bike lanes. Going from forty two or fifty feet to seventy feet for width.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there, uh, there's a lot of, uh, retrofit ideas. Space is a premium, right? So I think you, you can see reallocation of space, buffering of the two foot, uh. Bike lane and trying to get some vertical separation in that is a way that it's been approached. But it, really, everything is really unique in terms of giving people spaces on roads. So sometimes it's a shared road, sometimes it's the Oregon Avenue approach of combining into a cycle track. Sometimes it's paths, as Joe was talking about, uh, I've seen even new communities do paths on both sides because they want that mixing on both sides. New is very different than retrofitting. Retrofitting, you have unique constraints. Um, one thing I wanted to just circle back on, you were talking about the O C and E con- connection between the existing trail and downtown. So that's been, um, discussed a lot over the years. At one point in time, I won't make Mark say how many times he's tried to get money for that bridge. But it's a lot. Um, so the current plan, if you see on here, it's kind of small in this particular one. M fifteen is a project that goes, show right there. It takes the current trail alignment and there's a road, there's a path connection, forget the exact, or South Road east of the, of the existing South Six Street Bridge. It gets a connection up to the existing South Six Street Bridge to try to not wait for some.
to try to not wait for some miracle grant to arrive to make that happen. So I, I don't believe there's any lack of desire to get a specific bridge across a pretty large rail yard. But in the meantime, the connection planned is to utilize South Sixth Street to at least have that connection for you to get up and over from there, so. Sorry, I wanted to make that clear. Um, okay, keeping going. Uh, we talked about bridges in Culver, so Jeremy talked about that. This is just a map of where some of those are. Chapter six is the funding chapter. So Jeremy mentioned, we have a look at what those needs are for these improvements for both the city and the county in the urban area. Talking about, uh, the capital costs associated with that. The maintenance costs are, of course, ongoing in, in addition to that. And then also possible options for funding, whether those be grants or other things the city might consider. I'll just be really clear, there's nothing in the TSP that changes funding strategies. It just recommends various options and identifies the needs associated with those. The city and county are not unique in having a shortage of funding. That is everywhere that we do transportation work. Nobody has enough money, even in many cases, to maintain what they have. So this is a real problem. Obviously, the state, um, has an issue they're trying to address this year, even right now, about statewide funding. So this is a big question, not just for this community, but we don't wanna diminish the fact that it still is an issue here. So I think we're in the, looking at how you break it down, it's in that over three hundred million, four hundred million. Jeremy will point out, so I won't make him do it, that it's, that's just the urban area. Their county has needs outside of the urban area, so the, the, the needs are vast. Possible funding sources are various. Um, so within the urban area, um, flexible streams are typically best, things that can be used for maintenance. Some project costs, uh, grants are project-specific. So we talked about those on, on the right side of the screen here, uh, with state throughout the school programs, um, some of the federal raise grant, build grant, those kinda things. Um, there's broader, um, local uses like street utility fees, system development charges, general obligation bonds. They can fund specific projects. Again, we're not suggesting those today, but just presenting those as options. We have to, though, I think, be realistic that additional streams of revenue, however they come, are pragmatic and useful because even when you go after grants, oftentimes, there's a local match needed. Um, so the local funds are still needed even if you get the big federal grants. Um, I showed this before, but just for context, many communities in the state have some type of system development charge. Um, it's about seventy-six according to League of Oregon Cities. And just by frame of reference, this is, uh, Redmond recently updated their system development charge, uh, for transportation. And this gives a range of what a single-family home would cost in various communities. This is as of last year, so Wilsonville in an urban area is the highest, around sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars per home. Roseburg, Sisters Hood River, down to the two to three thousand dollar range. So you can set that number wherever you want, you can tie it to whatever projects you want. But it, it just can be that way of getting a little bit of money for the cities and counties to work with as you, as you try to actually build these things going forward.
What's current versus maximum, I don't understand that.
Oh, sorry, well, so, SDCs has an entire law, um, around it at the state level. So you can identify what your maximum SDC could be based on your needs and your growth. But you have the ability to set your rate at whatever you think is reasonable. So you don't have to collect the entire amount that you would, as theory, be able to if growth were paying a hundred percent for itself. That's a policy decision that cities and counties make all the time, saying we're, we could charge this, we're gonna charge fifty percent of that or twenty percent.
So actually, Redmond's collecting five thousand one seventy.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, Redmond today, this is from Redmond's work. So Redmond today was collecting five thousand one hundred seventy dollars per, um, per single-family home. Their update, which they passed last fall, is taking it to twelve thousand seven hundred, which is their maximum. I think they're phasing that in. For what it's worth, Redmond's is higher than Ben's right now, which I think is an interesting, uh, discussion because Ben has invested significantly in general obligation bonds and other things to try to reduce the needs of development to pay for this. It's not to say one is right or the other, but it's different strategies on how money has come into the city. I think they're good examples of how that can kinda go. And ultimately, it's a policy, local decision. This TSP is identifying the need, the funding comes next, but it's an important follow-on to keep this.
Well, Medford's four thousand one fifty-five.
Yep.
For a single-family unit.
For a single-family home, yeah. And different uses would have different charges. All right, so this is, uh, single-family homes, easy to compare. How those get rolled out to non-residential uses is different and you can take different methodologies. So these are developed through what's called a methodology report that gets documented, adopted, et cetera, so, yeah.
Not to get too far afield, Jeremy, how, what's our?
Well, so, um, I, these two bodies, probably, we need to have a follow-up, you know, work session and have a full discussion on funding. That is a very important question. I just wanted to point out today, both organizations don't have funding to bring to the table. And so that results in two things of, uh, well, you're developing a particular lot. So a hundred percent of this, this, that, and that, and a signal are on you. And then they have to make a business decision of, um, you know, whether or not that is, um, acceptable or not. There's also a legal side of that. We sometimes require those items, like a signal. Well, let's say there was an existing problem and, uh, the background traffic is fifty percent of the problem. The develops that, development is adding fifty percent. And we ask them for a hundred percent. They can haul us to court and say that's unproportional. And then the result of that is the county or the city own fifty, owe fifty percent. And then we say we don't have money to bring to the table, so, you know, we, I guess we're not building a signal and we're gonna let it just be, uh, uh, get really bad from a traffic standpoint or a safety standpoint. Um, the other scenario is, well, let's go apply for a grant. And, uh, grants are competitive, they have calls per project. You can't just go apply for a grant, there has to be, you know, a parent funding, um, program available. And then you apply for a, a grant, it's highly competitive. Uh, you're not selected. You get to go back to them and say, well, we weren't selected, so we can't do that. Or you're selected, okay, let's sign a IGA with ODOT and, uh, spend a year doing that. And then we'll spend, uh, a few months selecting a consultant and then we'll do the environmental permitting for a year. And then a developer, um, in about five years, now that we've been awarded this grant, we should be able to build the item that we're both, uh, working on. And so, that's, that's, that's the reality that we have today, is that grant or no funding to bring to it. Um, I say we circle back, uh, once the plan's adopted and have a robust, um, couple of work sessions joint to, uh, investigate. We would probably hire a consultant to bring options to the table so that we can all have, uh, consideration of that. But, um, what that means is this, this plan, you know, so you asked, what do you think ours should be? I don't know, we've never ran the numbers. And, um, back in two thousand nine, uh, there were SDCs that made it ninety percent of the way through the system. And, uh, the board and the city council, I believe, considered those. And at the time, uh, given the economy, um, voted to, um, not have system development charges then. Uh, there's pros and cons to if we would've accepted those then, we'd have a pot of money to bring to the table today. Today, we don't have a pot of money, so we're kind of at that crossroads again. This is dusting off all of those problem intersections and future intersections and future roads and bridges that need to be replaced or maintained. And, um, so we could have a couple of meetings very specifically on funding. And I would volunteer that we need to do that over the next twelve months.
So we don't have SDC fees in the county, is what we're saying? Joseph, what, what are you doing in the city?
So there are no transportation system developments. So these are all transportation SDCs. So the city, for example, does have SDCs primarily for utilities, so to connect to the water system or super system. Uh, but there are not transportation SDCs.
I see.
So there are SDCs in the community, yes.
And really, that is a different discussion than we're here to, to, to tonight, I think.
Yeah, it's, the intention is to say, there's a need, there's funding out there. SDC is a common one, so I just wanted to give some context of, I think the intent of this is not to say you should be high or low, it's just that there is a range of strategies out there. And this can be one of several. I think relying on singular sources has been, uh, uh, something that's come to roost a little bit in the transportation world, right? With relying on just one type of source, whether it be gas tax or SDCs or this or that. Having a strategy of multiple sources that can be used, uh, is good. It creates with the, it helps with the proportionality piece that Jeremy was talking about, that's a real thing, um, to deal with. So, yeah, we're not solving it today, but certainly this sets the stage for having a conversation because the needs are better understood and you can go forward with that. How the, um, transportation system is funded is through state gas tax and vehicle registrations. Um, roughly, seven and a half million dollars, I'm talking county numbers, uh, comes in through the state gas tax that trickles back to us based on registered vehicles. If you divide seventy, seven point five million by eighty-eight thousand registered vehicles, you get roughly eighty-five dollars a year is what the average person, if everybody drove the same amount of miles and had, had the same gas mileage, would pay. If you divide eighty-five dollars by twelve, that's six, seven dollars a month? My Netflix, um, subscription is double that. And, uh, in the, uh, gas tax mechanism, you pay eighty-seven dollars a year to use a thousand miles of county roads and five hundred miles of state, you know, highways and, and a hundred and plus miles of city roads plus all of the other communities. That's a really good deal. One of my counter-road officials, uh, Chris Doty in Deschutes County, uh, says that as a society, we probably need to start thinking of transportation more like a utility as opposed to, uh, taking it for granted and just paying our eighty-five dollars a year. And so, even compared to a water or sewer bill, um, you know, of thirty dollars a month, you know, times twelve months is three hundred and sixty-five dollars. We're paying eighty-five dollars to use thousands of miles of roads, so. Well, moving on, um, yeah, options, that's the idea. But, so, to that end, implementing is a big part of this, it's the plan, but what we do with it. Um, so there's the near-term implementation, which is how do we get this into the plan itself? So I'll turn it over to Joe to talk through.
All right, let's see. I, I'd spoken a little bit about the Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. So if adopted, the, if, like somebody was, Clamath Falls Urban Area Transportation System Plan, I'll just call it TSP, becomes incorporated as a background document in the Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. And then we put a summary section within this kind of, uh, volume, so you can see that. Basically comprises the transportation, transportation, uh, element chapter of the comprehensive plan. I, I feel like we're not really getting too much in the way of actual standards. There's reference to roadway spacing, but not talking about nuts and bolts in the TSP. Jeremy had alluded to, again, we're not talking about types of curbs, thickness of cement, um, again, how wide a sidewalk is. I think that's all listed in City Public Works Engineering Standards. I think it's in the Clamath County Land Development Code, but not necessarily touching those items. Something that we did find, though, so this is for the city tonight, but not the county, when the two thousand twelve Transportation System Plan was adopted, Clamath County actually amended its land development code, LDC, to come into what they call Transportation Planning Rule Compliance. Uh, the city, looks like we went all the way down the pathway, but for whatever reason, um, somebody at Edits didn't make it into our CDO. So at this point, county actually doesn't have to do anything to make its land development code compliant with state rules. City has to do a few things, so we'll kinda touch on that. I did, together with Elizabeth from Jet Planning, we looked through our current, uh, community development ordinance, made a few updates. You can see, I think it's pretty basic in general. Some of the updates relate to providing notice to ODOT if there's a project that's going to affect one of the communities. Um, let's see, requiring or adding as a condition of approval on subdivisions that you have the ability to request past street improvements or road stubs or crossover access easements if you're developing on one side of the stuff. Um, I believe there's some requirements related to, or for, not necessarily requirements, but more concessions that if people put in van full or car full for parking, they may have less parking required, so. Uh, there's some items about connections for commercial uses, let's say, front door to a sidewalk. So a lot of the items are already in our code, I'm happy to talk about any of them in more detail, but this was something that was, um, all the way through the process in two thousand twelve, but didn't quite make it into our published code. Um, so that's part of what we're doing as part of this TSP amendment or update right now.
We have some more, you, I think you hit a lot of this stuff already.
So these are those specific amendments to the Community Development Ordinance. Uh, we're actually listing out some transportation facilities as allowable land uses and calling out a short review process. They're basically listed as allowable land uses in all zones, not specifically spelling it out. More clearly defining when a traffic impact study is needed. So how many trips triggers a traffic impact study? What are those requirements for comparing a traffic impact study? How do we review it? More than anything, I think it's just clarity, because right now, it's not very, uh, people say, hey, do I need a traffic study? Do I need this? And it's like, well, let's, let's think about this. But I, I think this is clear in one place, if you create over this many trips in a peak hour, you need a traffic study prepared by a registered, designed, professional traffic engineer.
Allowing, I think also, clear discretion with the city engineer can more say, this could happen, but make it clear that the city engineer. So, yeah, just a lot of clarity, uh.
I think that was it, that was mostly it.
Um, and then you talked about this, we adopted, street standard, we talked about the, adopted by reference, so no code changes. Access standards have existed in the TSP, so they remain, do we keep them in the TSP? I think we did.
Kinda can't remember. Um, so the access standards, as we were talking about different road types, we have much, say, longer access standards or driveway spacing standards on something like Washburn Way versus more of a lesser road. Uh, part of the standards that we're putting into the CDO are like the ability to consider shared driveways, which I think makes sense in certain circumstances where you're trying to get those off the road and then have all these rented road-type facilities. You see that at Washburn Way, for example, where there's easements all the way along the front kitchen cars.
So, from what I can tell, about half of Clamath County residents will have to drive into Clamath Falls to experience the wonderful place it is. Whether you're going to courthouse or you're going to someplace else. So talk to me about parking, because I see parking as an integral component of, you know, the overall transportation plan, am I wrong?
So I would say, I, you know, parking is one of those most contentious items.
Oh, yeah.
Anytime we have a discussion on downtown parking in our new Pelican Pass. But truth be told, this does not get into parking. So within our land development codes, we, we give every use type and there's a certain number of parking requirements for each. Uh, this doesn't really get into parking reductions on street parking. Uh, the only thing that it really does is, I mentioned within our code, that there's some parking reduction. I think it's up to ten percent in a certain number of spaces. If you're an employer of or a certain size and incorporate carpool parking. But that's really the only adjustment the TSP is making as far as parking goes.
I'd, I'd see it kind of as a gap from the, the urban growth boundary perspective. Would like to see if there's something we can do for final approval to be more clear about that. Only because it, I think it will be a big, a bigger issue for people like me who live outside town and folks who can't bike in or do something else.
Yeah, it, so parking is very important. It's not, it's something, though, that typically i- is not addressed in the TSP, it's addressed in the code itself with the land use requirements of a particular use and how the parking is associated with that use. So, um, well, it's a big issue. It's, I think putting in the TSP would create that cumbersome relationship of, you need to update the TSP to change parking standards, or you wanna put all your parking standards in the TSP. They don't need to be there because they're already in code. And while they're, they are, they are important, it's just, it's doesn't, it doesn't typically exist in this document.
I'll leave it at one, just one more comment you can respond to, but I understand what you're saying. You're speaking about it from a regulatory perspective. I'm speaking about it from a planning perspective and anticipating need and being ready for, you know, to improve the satisfaction people would come into town. Which is why I think something should be in the plan to talk about what happens to storage. Because if you look at it, it is the single largest land use element in downtown Clamath Falls right now. So we should be thinking about it in the plan and how we will enhance it or manage it as we improve the ability of people to get.
Yeah, I think even in those cases, the way I've seen communities address that and we've, we've helped with these kinda things is, you'll create, for example, a downtown parking plan that can exist and stand on its own. Um, so that, I think, can, you know, maybe should be an approach to that, or even sub-area type plans, or even citywide plans. Uh, there's no state requirement that it exists in here, so my recommendation is, but you don't create that, that. There's no state requirement that it exists in here, so my recommendation is, but you don't create that, that step, but you can still do the planning work you're talking about, kind of in another avenue.
Okay, and that's kind of a recommendation to you, Joe, or the group. Should be something.
There's no such thing as reparking.
Yeah, there's a book on that. So we're at the end of our presentation, so I'll stop there and turn it over to either more questions from the group, or I think we also have some process to go through to actually consider.
Yeah, with that said, so do we have further questions for staff and/or consultant?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
The recommended projects, are they designed to be all completed? Or is it just kind of as needed, excepting the vision projects, of course? Is, is the idea that they'll all get done in that twenty years?
The hope is that they'll all get done. The reality is, is that the funding just doesn't exist for them, so that they'll be driven by the availability of funding, wherever that comes from. So in some cases, there's allocation of capital dollars. We could expand a certain amount every year. We try to identify where high priority projects could be tackled first. One thing I'll note on that is that it doesn't require they go first. There's sometimes reasons that you might want to do a medium project or long-range project. But simply put, there's no money really for any of them at this point in time, so we have to kind of tackle those one by one. So while the hope is there, the mechanism is not yet.
And then of the twenty twelve projects that were recommended, how many of them have been completed?
It's a good question.
How do we do on that?
Not zero, not zero.
It's not zero, that's good.
I don't know. We, I don't know that, we did do exercise early on to remove projects completed. I would have to go back. Brandon?
Very few of the vision projects, because most of those were developed and driven. Like, just as an example, there'll be an extension of Dahlia Street from where Shiloh Inn is to the backside of Falls. Something like that hasn't got completed yet. So we call down a lot of those. You know, I
I don't know. Brandon, do you have any recollection of how many we removed? I, I would have put you on the spot. Miranda was, was doing a lot with the project list early on.
Some projects have been completed. I would have to also look back at information that we have to give you an exact list. The progress has been made. Just, there's still a lot of work to do.
Progress is good.
Jeremy was pointing out earlier that, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so on the twenty twelve urban growth, the urban TSP, the county inside of the entire county, the unincorporated area, had one county road project, and it was by Nexus, which was the Homedale South Side Bypass project.
Roundabout, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, and so that's an example of a project that was done. The, the fallacy of the twenty twelve urban TSP is that I would say that half of the projects or more that we have in the current one should have been in the plan. And so it was the very first iteration of it and the very first time that staff had ever tackled developing a TSP from scratch. And I think that we could have done, and we have done currently, much better at capturing the existing problems and also predicting, trying to project out where the future problems are going to be.
There really hasn't been much in the way of new road construction in that same area. Roadway extension was something that was identified. But if you look at most of the county roads, I can't think of how many, like sidewalks, for example, have been added along collector roads, which were identified as project projects.
The IAMP out at sixty-six Green Springs, you know, phase, I guess you'd call that phase one, is complete.
It's a realignment.
Yep.
Should come more prepared.
Well, that being said, is that the funding was restricted, so with no funding, that's exactly what we've accomplished, is like two projects, and they were primarily funded by ODOT.
So I, I understand that we, in order to complete the projects, you're going to fund it. Right. I guess the first, I know you have recommended funding sources or like potential funding sources as a document. Whose responsibility is it to find the funding to complete these projects?
So we try to, it's, it's a balancing act. If you don't have any funding, so, so grant sources come out. An example of a grant source, I'll put Mark on the spot, is the Build Grant, which used to be the Tiger Grant. The city, which is the East Main Extension. The city's applied for that five times and been denied five times for that, for that grant. Community path grants. The county applied for extending the Foothills Bike Path to the end of the Patterson Sidewalk two years ago, not selected. So highly competitive, and I guess my point would be if we're reliant on grants, it's going to be, you know, a long, tough road ahead.
So are these grants offered at the state level?
State and federal, correct.
I guess what I'm curious about is who is, who's, who is going through the project list deciding which grants to apply for and which projects?
So we have a call for projects that comes out, like on the Build Grant. And usually, city and county staff get together and say, what's the highest ranking priority in the community? In the past, it's been the East Main Bypass, and we've attempted to fund that. We got together when the Community Path Grant through ODOT came out and said the only project that has the right of way and matching dollars to go is the Patterson Extension. We have dozens of viable projects, but because they're a dot on a map, doesn't mean that they have the right of way or environmental clearances or other things to, to proceed. But it is a active thing that city staff does. There isn't a lot of grants out there. So it's the same grants that come up and pretty, pretty well in a cycle. And we have routine meetings to decide who's applying and what, what priority they are. The Build Grant is an example of something that it costs tens of thousands of dollars to apply. And so we hire a consultant to apply, and so we get denied. And so the next time, is it easier to apply for the same project for a few hundred dollars, or is it best to scrap all of the work that went into that and hire a consultant to plan for and, and prepare another cost or another project? Those decisions happen when calls for projects come out.
The city was just successful on the safety grant? Was it marked a million and two million?
Yeah, it's for safety control.
Couple million bucks for that?
Two million?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that has a five hundred thousand dollar match.
Yeah.
We've been fairly successful at TGM grants through ODOT. The, the last TSP, so planning level, but planning is hundreds of thousands of dollars, not tens of millions of dollars for bridge projects and, and things like that. So the grant, and I will say there are plenty of cities and counties out there that are competing for those, and it is they're actually in worse shape than we are. And a lot of times, Clamath County has fifteen weight-restricted bridges. I talked to my counterpart in Yumitilla County, and he's got eighty percent of his bridges are weight-restricted, you know? And so he applies, and also one of his bridges has a hundred-mile detour, which is a big impact. Our weight-restricted bridge has a two-mile detour. So those types of things get taken into account by the people that are deciding on the grants.
So do we have any further questions from the, from the commission for the staff or for the consultant? Okay, hearing none, then I'm going to open the public comment portion of tonight's hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that signed up? Robin, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, so I guess we'll close that then. And that puts us to move to the joint public hearing. Oh, excuse me, that, we closed that. So that puts us to joint planning commission deliberation. So I would call on the city council or the city commission and the county commission to deliberate towards a solution here as far as recommendation that board of county commissioners go. Would you guys like to fire away over there on the city?
I can.
In regards to a motion or deliberation in regards to this?
I think, I think everything that's been presented today meets the standard that we're looking for for the adoption and recommendation from the findings for the city.
Can we hear something from the county commissioner?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think this is a complete, is totally a comprehensive plan. Counting through them, sixteen plans combined to make this one. And even trying to sort through a couple of them to see if you missed anything. There's, there's direct carryover, so I don't, I don't think you guys missed much. So good job there. Appreciate all the effort put into that. And like has been mentioned, three to four hundred million dollars of unfunded projects that need to happen. So what I really appreciate about, about this plan is an implementation strategy of once we get to making things happen, there are ways to get there. So this plan, it, that's it. It's a plan. It's a way to get there, and I think we can follow it all the way through. If there were other issues about how do we get the funding, I think I would lean on the both planning commission entities to maybe, or even to the county planning commission to consider a working group or a committee to go seek some of those things and make some recommendations to the decision-makers. But as far as I can see, I think this plan is, is good and solid.
Any further deliberations?
I would agree with what Joe said. It feels very thorough. Everything has been gone through. I, I've had a couple little questions here and there, but they've, for the most part, been addressed in your presentations. So, well done. I like it. I think it's, it's a good path forward, and we just have to figure out how to make the, the money happen so that we can complete more than just a couple projects out of this one.
Real quick, by creating the plan and having the dots and the lines on a map, it allows us to apply for those grants. If we had a blank map and wanted to have the least dollar amount shown for, for funding purposes, actually to, a, a question that comes up on grants often is, is this in your transportation system plan? And if it's not, we have to go quickly try to amend it in the thirty or sixty days that a grant's open, and then we have to go through these processes to add a dot to a map in order to be able to apply and check the box. So it's better to have, and it's a balanced approach. I think we did well on the number of dots and the existing issues and projecting out to the future issues.
Well, this way you don't apply for something for A, which you actually really needed it for B.
Correct. It, it gives a strategic, so when somebody also comes in and has a project that is important to them, we would rank and prioritize it against this group to see if it does or doesn't make the cut in order to become the highest or somewhere in the, in the mix. It does, it's kind of like a strategic plan that by having it allows you to
It's got the flexibility that as things change in twenty years, because who knows how Clamath Falls is going to grow? It might grow considerably faster, you know? It, it seems to have a flexibility, especially when you're talking about plans that go beyond the twenty years. You know, it's got a twenty-year scope, but it does have projects that go beyond. I, I think it's well done.
I'm gonna
Go ahead.
Say, although I've asked a lot of questions and I have some concerns, I yeah, it, it does provide an important fundamental basis for doing planning in Clamath. So, you know, I think it, that it seems to meet that threshold with the understanding, you know, what I was talking about earlier. So, you know, certainly the condition is like, there's, there's a lot there to like and a lot to inform about.
If we hear no further deliberation, then according to my agenda, the city planning commission has first shot at.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Very rarely do I get the first shot.
I move that the planning commission, the city planning commission accepts staff findings presented and consider the staff report as city's evidence in public hearing. All those in favor? Take a five, say. Chair, vote aye.
And then there's the second part of that. So you accepted the finding.
Yes.
The finding of the plan, so then if you
If you could put them on the same page. I move to recommend adoption of the twenty twenty-five Clamath Falls Urban Area Transportation System Plan one dash CPA dash two five with relationship to the CDO amendments to comply with Oregon transportation rule, planning rules based on the findings that's accepted.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair, vote aye. Motion passes.
Okay, so that leaves it to the county to take the second shot.
Yeah.
And so I would go to the county planning commission for a motion. Now, remember, this is just a recommendation to the board of county commissioners.
Yes.
So may I hear a, a motion?
I'll, I'll go ahead. I move that the county planning commission accepts staff's presented finding and consider the staff report as the county's evidence in the public hearing.
Okay, and we need to reference this right here, Jennifer. CLUP one dash two five.
I think, do we do that in the second part?
Yep.
Yeah, well, can you?
A second, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Anyone neutral? Okay, the first portion has passed.
I further move to recommend adoption of the twenty twenty-five Clamath Falls Urban Area Transportation System Plan, CLUP one dash two five, based on the finding as accepted.
You need a second? We have a second. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone neutral? Okay, so we are going to bring this to the board of county commissioners with recommendation of approval. And we'll bring it to the city councils. Now, other matters. Are there any other matters out there?
Yes, real quick on the county side. Commissioner Sparks decided not to run for, or decided that he, for various reasons, was going to take some time off. So he stepped down. He was the vice chair. So I would say at our March meeting, which we have an active agenda and a few things that we're going to consider, but the commission, if somebody were to volunteer and or, and vote on that for a new vice chair.
Very good. We'll keep that under consideration until next year.
Sorry, February meeting.
February.
Yep.
February twenty-fifth is the next meeting.
February twenty-fifth.
And there's, there's planning to be two zone change proposals are on the agenda.
Oh, boy. That's going to be a mess.
Small ones.
Yeah, there's no such small zone change.
Quick question on that. We got some new, new members. Are you going to have training prior to that? We actually had a crash course in, yesterday for two of them and this morning for the other one. So it was, it was a crash course. Did everybody get that? I'm not sure if it may have taken a few years off. I would be happy if anybody would like to run through that again. Just reach out to me and, and schedule an hour.
That'd be good.
So.
I think Eric at the time was also going to do some, like, occasional code review.
Yes, we do have, so in February, we have several things. We do have some overarching housing and lot size things. We are, staff's working on those in the background. When, when and if we get a light agenda for a particular meeting, or if we don't have an agenda, we would insert that in as a work session. We are going to get a little more proactive about having those work sessions and being into it in order to review and modify our, our code, if applicable. And, but if we get super busy and have loaded agendas, I'll plant the seed. We may have to have work sessions like at a two-week interval offset from the actual meeting just to not, to, to process applications and get those through and approved. But then it makes a long night to have these code provisions. And so there could be a time if we have lots of projects to have a work session at, inside of the same month that we have a planning commission meeting.
Let's hope we get that busy.
Yeah, it'd be a good problem to have, yeah.
There could be some stuff coming down. I think it's going to be a busy year for the planning commission, actually.
That's good.
Uh, we, we also, sorry to interrupt, Chair. We haven't in the past, but we're working on a summary for how many applications and LUCSs and things that we issued last year. I think that's an important update for the planning commission to know every year, and we can kind of see where we're at. That's, that's a good indicator of, of how things are going. So at the next meeting, we'll probably give a brief overview. So at the next meeting, we'll probably give a brief overview of twenty twenty-four and how many of certain types of applications came in.
Okay. Any further things we'd like to discuss? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, yes.
All those in favor, let's just leave. Matt, thank you so much for all your work.
Yeah, thank you.